State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down hall service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole, because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, my name's Vince Hughes. I'm the owner and pharmacist at Hackleburg Pharmacy in Hackleburg, Alabama. We're located here on Highway 43. Here at Hackleburg Pharmacy, we have state-of-the-art technology to ensure accuracy and efficiency to effectively help us provide you, the patient, with the best pharmacy services available. We carry a variety of products, from a full line of vitamins to knives and knife sharpeners. We'll open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. until 5:30. Phone number is (205) 935-3392. We'd love to be part of your healthcare team.
Hello, everyone. This is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today, and just want to let you know, we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now houses lawn mower. We're going to have a full line of the steel zero turn motors. We have a full line of the steel weed trimmer and chainsaws. Just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint to hardware, anything you need. Come see us. We'll help you if we can. Thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Gwin and Fayette. We've been serving the people of Northwest Alabama for 23 some odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store if you'd let us, and we'd like to thank you for your business this past year and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year and for the years to come. Merry Christmas and have a happy new year.
Hello, Lee Hines here, owner-operator of Alexander's Heating and Air Conditioning. We've been family-owned and operated since 1954, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and light commercial HVAC systems. So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Gwin to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Your story starts at Beville State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Beville State has an opportunity that is right for you, with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality service and products with value to meet every family's need. You will find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tony Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at (205) 487-4327.
Lord, I pray that you'll be with us as we go through the night with this Winfield City Council meeting, that we make the right decisions for the public and not have a personal agenda for the decisions we make, but we make the right decisions. Pray that you'll be with us when we make the decision. I pray that you'll go with us through the rest of this week and keep us safe and forgive us for what we've done. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the river code for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
If you don't mind, before we start, I'd like to, I need to go into, I'd like to go into executive session just for a few minutes to discuss the good name and character of an individual. I need to ask for a motion. Allow us to do that. Keith made a motion. Gina second. All in favor. If you will kill me for just a minute, take about five, 10 minutes maybe. Probably with good name and character.
I thought it was funny.
Did y'all wake Angie back up? Yeah, it's Keith. We need to make a, make a motion. Go out of executive session. We need to make one, come back in. I need to ask for a motion to go back into regular session. James and Gina, come back in. First item on the agenda is, first, I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 21st, 2023 Winfield City Council meeting. I failed to do that earlier, going into executive session, but the first item on the agenda is approve of minutes from the March 7th, 2023 meeting. If nobody's got a comment or question, how long the minutes are written, I need to ask for a motion to approve. Gina made a motion to second. Tim second. All in favor. First, second item on the agenda is reappointment of school board member. I was made aware today that that in statute is supposed to be done the first week in April, so we're going to not do that tonight. We're going to move that forward, do it the first week in April, just where we can stay in line with statute the way it's written. Any council member have a problem with us moving forward with that next council meeting? Third item on the agenda is CDVG Resolution Number 1341 Procurement Policy. All right, I'll read this Resolution Number 1341. Amending the city of Winfield written CDVG procurement policy, whereas the city of Winfield adopted this written CDVG procurement policy on April 3rd, 1995, and amended it September 15th, 2009. Whereas the city of Winfield needs to amend this written CDVG procurement policy to be consistent with current laws regarding CDVG procurement. Then therefore be it resolved that the attached standards of conduct and methods of procurement shall become the municipality's new CDVG procurement policy, and the CDVG procurement policy supersedes all other CDVG procurement policies which have been adopted by the city of Winfield. Y'all need to read this standards of conduct and methods of procurement. It's a requirement by state law that we do this to be in compliance. My recommendation to council, give them a motion second to adopt this Resolution 1341. James, motion. Tim, second. All in favor. We have, you know, of course, you know, we just finished a CDVG project on Eagle Street. We've got a CDVG project going on now with a demolition. We've had a CDVG sewer project at Tiffin Service Center. We've had a CDVG project at the Tiffin parking lot at the Mangman Fracture and at the main plant. And we, as when I come in, we had a CDVG project going on with Tahoe Road. Something like we've had a CDVG project about every year for a good while back. I appreciate y'all approving that. Item number four, give notice for special election to be held on June 13th for council seat place number one. Resolution Number 1342, city clerk absentee as an absentee election manager.
This is the governor's letter to Judge Vic. This is Judge Vic to Ace, and then this is the resolution.
We got a, we got a letter from Governor Kay Ivey to
To
Probate Judge, Ms. Vic. However, received a notification on February 24th, 2023, which indicated vacancy of the Winfield City Council that occurred on December 10th, 2022. Also received were letters from the mayor and the majority of the council members indicating a desire to fill vacancy by special election. Per the request, this office will not be making an appointment for the council seat, and I'm notifying you to, of the need to call for special election. That was from Kay Ivey to Ms. Vic. And then we've got a letter from the probate court of Marion County, the orders of this special election to be held on June 16th. I need to ask for a motion to
This is June 13th.
This is June 13th.
This is 13th. Okay. June 13th. Resolution Number 1342, compensating city clerk. That's what we're going to need to act on, is this 1342, compensating city clerk for duties as absentee election manager, whereas municipal election will be held in the city of Winfield on 13th day of June 23rd, and whereas Section 11-46-57 Code of Alabama 1975 provides that the city clerk or other officer performing the duties of the clerk shall perform the duties of the absentee election manager, and whereas for performing these duties, the municipal government may compensate the clerk in whatever manner and amount it deems appropriate. So therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council establish a rate of $50 per day for the city clerk, Angie Oliver, for each day she is performing duties as absentee election manager for the special municipal election dated June 13th, 2023, and any runoff election held thereafter. I need to ask for a motion to approve that Resolution 1342. Motion, Gina second, but Tim, all in favor.
So I had asked Angie this earlier, so this now starts tomorrow.
Qualification.
What's the timeline of the qualification?
So, I mean, you can start qualifying tomorrow to April the 25th, I believe. I have to check my timelines. I'll have the timelines posted on our website, and I'll post them up front, and we will run it in the paper.
Next item on the agenda, cemetery lawn care bid.
So I mailed out to there. I ran it in the paper twice, and we only received one bid back.
This is who else, if you need to look over this, right? This is who else she sent a bid. Sent them certified off soon. Sent all of them certified to these people to ask about putting in a bid and running it in the paper.
Twice.
Two different times.
Here's the publication.
Here it is in the paper if you need to see it. And we only have one bid turned in.
And it was from the man that's been doing it?
Yeah, I reckon, we don't have anybody here on the cemetery board, do we?
They chose not to meet since it was the man that had been doing it the whole time, and so since they didn't meet, I didn't open it.
So they're satisfied with the work you've been doing. That's the main thing. His bid, your cost for minimum 12 mowings and weed, weed cutting in the entire city cemetery is $9,000. Your cost for each additional mowing and weed cutting for the entire cemetery is $750. They are licensed and insured. Here's a copy of the insurance. Anybody needs to see it. My recommendation to council is we take the low bid. Catch on fast, James. Get a rec, I recommend that we take that bid. I need a motion and a second to accept that bid. Keith and Gina, all in favor? All right, next item on the agenda is old business. I'll start with Keith this time. Keith, if you've got any old business.
Have we got a reset that they own the red line?
Phil, say it again, Angie.
Somebody asked, I'm not saying a word.
Well, I mean, Angie can tell you what she knows, and I can tell you what I know. I got a call from the consultant and was having trouble, you know, getting the same color as you knew. We talked about that the last time, the base or something. He had to get okay from me to say that we would paint. We would have, they would, it was, it was a tad bit difference in the looks, but it was not enough that you'd have, you'd have to have them both side by side to be able to tell the difference. So I gave, told him he needed to go ahead and have that painted, baked, painted or whatever, on the base of that one, that one, the only one they could get was a gray. That's where we at on that, and I talked to Charlie Kilgore today that's working with the electrician that's going to be working on this project, and they had, they had received a call this week from the consultant about some parts that they were looking for that they need for it. And they assured me, I think, that those are taken care of. As far as the timeframe, they've moved it back, what, two weeks?
He didn't say to me.
Does he give you any other information?
Is that the last Saturday?
It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be the first week in April. Now, that's not me making no promises. I'm just bringing you up to speed on it. You got anything else, Gina? Tim? Yeah, you got, have y'all, y'all ready to, got a list of roads that you've got, a little area that we
We got some areas.
You got them?
I got some areas.
If you give me the, I need each one of his list, which one look at, and I'll get Luke to do like he done last time, give us a price, because we can see what, which ones, how many of us has got the same idea as to where we need to go. I've heard, I've heard, I've heard Kirkwood, that whole area down here around Kirkwood, the smaller streets that's in between.
Mallard, Echo, Eagle, Grant.
Yeah, the other streets, yeah.
That's all, that whole area back there.
Yeah, and then what's the one on the east side of town over here, off 31?
Lake Drive.
Yeah, Lake Drive.
And it's only gray circles.
They gray circle.
That's mine.
You got any, you got, your list kind of compared to the same as that?
That's mine right there.
Somebody asked, David.
Just finished the one over there by UPS where the court road and that other.
The other one right before court road.
Cambridge. It's going to be in the area, the little cul-de-sac of Brentwood.
At the back.
On the backside, they can play.
That very back street.
It's right there in there.
And of course, the track, the walking track, with the running track.
Decided Southland Loop would be the city's straight line. Southland Loop, did we ever decide that was a city's straight line? We talked about it, but we didn't know if it was a city's straight or not.
Try to pull it up here by the nursing home. We've talked about that before. We've talked about that one time before. If we decide that that is, if the city takes that and pays that in there, the city's going on those roads that's in
Well, I didn't know if it was already a city road or not.
Well, I don't think it's, I don't think it's marked out that way, to be honest with you. I don't, the reason I'm saying what I'm saying is if it ever is any other development in there, they're going to have to go through the procedure of abandoning and closing those roads if they won't change it to anything other than a mobile home park.
It's called Southland Loop program.
See, there at one time you were doing on your side, it wasn't city's straight or not.
No, if it is, I strongly agree that it needs to be, the city needs, if it is, I agree that the city needs to take responsibility and fix that, that loop in there. We add it to the list. But what I'm saying is if we add it to the list, and if we do research and we don't show the word that has been incorporated or dated to the city, we may need to reach out to the landowner and clear that up. What do you think, Tyler?
I think nine-one-one, I don't know if this matters, but they give us nine-one-one calls. They give us new areas for, say, Highway 253 lot, whatever.
Do you know what your name?
It's, they, it's, say, Highway 253.
It's changed owners since the last time we talked about fixing it. When I made the owner aware of that, they didn't want the city at that time to do anything because of that.
Fairmont Loop.
Yes, yes, yes.
Pen and Gollum.
What's that?
Fairmont Loop.
And you got Fairmont.
Put Fairmont on there, because it's right the road from all those others. Right behind, it's off of the highway. I mean, off of Foot Hill.
Well, I was thinking we done Foot Hill.
We did. They didn't do
Fairmont Loop's right, right off of it, right across the creek.
That's Cummins Court. Go around Cummins Court.
Before he get there.
I think there's about seven, eight houses in there. Well, I'm going, I'm going to proceed this, between now and the next council meeting, get the price. Esther. Jane.
The roof on your, your center, have you had any updates on it?
I talked with Angie today, and she said it is going to be cut.
See if that's
They are going to get in there and get some down.
That was prior to you give me this paper. Was that your discussion, was that prior to that paper that you gave me about the, what they found, about the looks of wood?
Are you talking about the NYA building or the
That says theater, I believe.
Okay, no, he, James was asking about the NYA building, weren't you? The theater?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, Angie, that's agreed as well, that they're going to do a roof and fix the inside.
What I asked them, what I had told Angie is we need to try to take those funds that they, over here, to when we go to rebuild that roof, because we're not looking at just putting a roof, putting a roof, putting some sheensels back on that roof. We want to fix that roof and then put the material that we want back on it. Is that correct? I mean, that's what I think we're
Yeah.
We need to have the roof done, so we can do the rest of the property cover area.
Here's what we agreed to. That's what my printer was doing also.
All right, on this, New York, several different names we call that building, for lack of knowing them all, I'm going to say the, the Christian Center Building down here. Cost of roof replacement, cost of $10,130.81. We can issue the actual cash value of $81.81 oh nine, if when the roof is actually replaced. We can then issue the depreciation withheld of $1,949.72. So they're going to put that toward that roof.
So I've signed the, I've signed the principal loss to get the 81, 81 or whatever, whatever.
Good luck with that. Yeah. You got anything else, Gina? Back over here, we've got, I don't know if y'all have been by and seen what's still going on with Army over here with the process, the progress that they're making over there with Brett and his, his guys. It's looking really good. We talked about, which James has done some artwork on the computer and showed what the building would look like with a, with, we're putting nine more windows in on the front to put, that way we'd have windows in each office that's on that front wall of that, which, James, let me see if I got mine right here. I can show the picture of what they That's, that's, that's James's, I don't know what you call it, on the computer added those windows to that building. You, I think you scroll one more to the right and show you what it is now. Maybe not. Anyway, you know, so I had, I had reached out to a, a brick, a brick, a bricklayer, a brick contractor. a brick, a bricklayer, a brick contractor, and I've reached out to two glass people about the glass. It's not gonna be a problem, get, turn the glass around in about two weeks. Just a little, roughly a little over four hundred dollars a window, uh, for the glass. But the reason I reached out to a brick company is, these first, the first two that's in there, the windows have been, the windows were cut exactly straight down, and the window put in there. To exist in windows, it was like when you break a house, it was bricked, and then they come out and measure the windows and put the windows in it. So, these two windows is, is, is off compared to the two that's already there. They don't have a, uh, a brick, what the right word is, underneath that with a brick ledge or whatever it is underneath that window, they don't have it on those two that they was installed. So, I asked them to come out and look, and I was kind of floored at the price, uh, since how good a price they give me to do it. They put those nine windows in, they break, and to cut the brick, put, cut the brick and build those windows like they're supposed to, like the other two windows for six thousand dollars, do all nine windows. Well, I had to get the approval from you guys, because I wanted to, I'd like to ask for a motion second to move them forward with doing that. Uh, that was, that's gonna change the looks of it drastically. And I don't know if you noticed on that picture, uh, James is also, which wasn't on that, uh, picture there, but we've got a, uh, the entrance to the front door, you scroll to the right, there's one more. Uh...
Oh, yeah.
The, we wouldn't have anything in the labor room doing that. You call that a canopy, a canopy in front of that building.
Would shake the supplies off, would get, uh, supplies for a little under fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred dollars for the supplies, and I talked to the bricklayer about laying, doing two brick columns out on the front of it, and put that, um, put that...
I guess it doesn't matter on the bricks, because I think the, kind of painted brick.
Right.
Kind of painted brick. Yes, sir, we do have that.
Or one you put under.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we can get the approval on the canopy, we can start with...
So, when you, when I...
I'm making money.
Well, I'd like to move, you know, keep moving forward with that, they're doing a real good job in changing the, helping the looks of the building. So, I need to, uh, got a motion from James, a second, Keith, all in favor to let them move forward on that. Uh, next item I got, so, on my old business is a parked truck, we put it on Gov, Gov Deals, Mike had put it on there. He had asked me for a reserve, uh, and I kind of done some checking. You don't have, you don't have, uh, the list of, I guess you, I didn't look over this, but I know, uh... Put on there as is.
Yes.
You checked as is on that one?
Yes, I mean, you can have your purchasing as is.
Right, we had, you know, we've had issues before when we put something on there as is, they come back and says it wasn't as is. I mean, we said that you buying it sight unseen and not checking it, you're buying it sight unseen and not checking. Uh, well, anyway, he asked me for a reserve on this, uh, two thousand eleven Ford, uh, F-150, and I gave him a reserve price of fifty-five hundred dollars. It didn't reach the reserve. I mean, while we're looking at, if we're gonna look at running this in the paper, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna pass this around, I guess. I'm like, Todd, Mike can tell me, I don't, it didn't reach reserve, I can tell you that, it didn't reach reserve. Now, you want to run it in a local paper, or you want to take the bid that, honor the bid that's been submitted to Gov Deals, on Gov Deals? You don't know where this person's located that's made this bid?
I don't know, it's not really known to accept the bid. I know we had last check around five hundred bids on the site, and we ran it for three weeks.
Uh, I need to, you know, let James see that as well. I mean, I don't, if you're gonna run it in the paper, there's no guarantee that you're going to, will have to refuse that bid, or will you?
I told Gov Deals that we would let them know after tonight's meeting if we were accepting it or re-bidding or, or meeting.
Uh... You know how many miles on it, remember how many miles on it?
Hundred and sixty-six thousand, I believe.
Got a transmission problem.
Yes.
I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, he asked me to set the reserve, and I'm there set the reserve a little bit high, but I don't, I thought that was kind of a ballpark. You're within... You're within eight hundred dollars of what the reserve is.
Yeah, it's got...
Why don't I say eight hundred, it's a little more than that, twelve hundred. Council want to, it's, in my, my recommendation to council is to take that bid.
I said, it's not to worry about it.
Well, I need to ask for a motion from Keith, or you make a motion to take the bid, and James second, all in favor? Wouldn't let them have it. As I had mentioned when we was talking about, uh, when we, we was talking about, uh, paving, I'd like for us to keep the track in mind, to do the track down to Port. And we'll get a price on that as well when we go, uh, moving forward with that.
What about the walking track?
Cause two different things.
Yeah.
Trail.
The trail?
I'm, I'll get with Luke, and let him get with them if, when they start pricing that, maybe send somebody up here and see if they are willing to do it, because it's gonna take a special type, it's gonna take a different type of equipment.
It's gonna be in there, favorite.
Not gonna be the one that paper streets with.
Well, they could, go out and knock down, eat trees.
Get some root.
Go up trees.
Mike can do some cross-country running down there then, I think, cross-country run on one that narrow anyway, didn't it?
Pretty tight.
Uh... Any other old business? Y'all gonna see some work going on down at the park where the Lions Club is, uh, attempting to rebuild the pavilion. They'll be taking the old pavilion down, if you see that, the Lions Club gonna, uh, put them a new one up, that been there since nineteen seventy-five.
That building is fifty years old this year. And we got bids to put the posts under it, and whatever's needed, and we got a price to put a whole new building up. And we decided some extra money and put a whole new building up, so it lasts another fifty years.
And wood lasted, sure the metal lasted another fifty.
Yeah, if that wood lasted fifty years, that new building might last fifty.
Did we have that pavilion insured?
I'm sure it's on our policy.
Uh...
Do you...
I need to, you got that policy with us? I'm going to, normally I look over this insurance policy myself.
It had a roof put on it, and there's a lot of walking wood on the legal, it was put on, so really, you know, rock thing to tear it down, so you know.
It's, it's on here.
Yeah, I'm on.
And here's the policy, and here's those adjustments we talked about.
I'm going to, there's been some question over the, uh, course of time about whether or not something's underinsured. I've never really had anybody say that was overinsured on anything, but I think we had that issue with a, uh, was it a parked truck? I wanna think that I didn't, uh, I hadn't insured, uh, full coverage, or maybe just had liability on it, and I think we might have had damage or something. So, I'm on, it's okay with the council, James being in that business, I'm gonna let him look over these policies before I sign this renewal. Uh, the total, the total annual premium on all of our, uh, city equipment and everything's a hundred and fifty-three thousand. So, I'm gonna let him look over this and see if we've got the right coverage he feels like on the buildings.
I can run the cost, that's later, I was probably writing policies to get this replacement cost on it.
See if we've got enough on it. Because we're asking, they're asking about these, uh, this, the very first page here is asking if we want, uh...
Rather than replacement, you know, we had actual, yeah. And this is a little bit cheaper than that one fifty-seven, and you'll see that somewhere on here, because he took size hill.
Uh, before, I think, on, uh, might have been one building is the estimate, you know? The first, the question that I have, a lot of times when we insure a building, and when we insure a city property, is, let's take for instance, if we got this sewer building, but a clinic over here, if we've got that building insured, if we got it insured for actual cash value or replacement cost or whatever, the question is, are we gonna replace it? If that building got destroyed in that last storm, would we replace that building?
Well, what you would admit, if you had had, uh, replacement cost on it, you've got eighty percent of that money up front, off this roof, you get eighty percent of that, and then when you replace it, you get the other twenty percent.
Correct.
So, if you're, if you figure your ACV at eighty percent, what the replacement cost is, that's what you would be getting, if you didn't replace the bill. So, you know, that's the reason why times you go ninety or eighty percent of the replacement cost as an actual cash value on something, because the premium's a little bit less.
Okay, let me, I saw something else.
Then you gotta measure, then you gotta look at how much you all want to wager in premium against two hundred thousand dollars more loss that I could have been given, so, you know?
Well, let me ask you this, let's say if it's a total loss. It's gonna cost, uh, eighty-five thousand dollars to remove the loss.
Normally, most of the cost is left in living in on, on, you just have to replace it.
Has what?
That's, that's figured as, as part of the policy on it.
Yeah, that's, that's another thing I'd like for you, for you will look into, because we don't wanna be caught, you know, blindsided on that.
You know, to be, to, to, to be perfectly fair, I always fight the work law, still, no, right? If anybody's giving you a review of the actual, we're here, please, you big guy, just put in, it's a little bit of a conflict.
And what I'm, what I'm kind of basing on is, is, uh, full coverage versus non-full coverage on automobile. In, in the same way, if you tell, if a council tells me that they want actual cash value, if they want replacement cost, that's what we'll do. It's not that I'm, it's not that I'm trying to get a better rate, I'm not asking you for a look at the rates, I'm asking for a look at the coverage.
Just, I'm just looking at this one part right here, it's got, uh, replacement cost to be eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Uh... You got insured, uh, eight, eight, thirty, thirty-nine should be one million two, so, he's got it figured in right there already, so, it's, uh...
I have, I have, personally in the past, to say, well, I don't want the three hundred thousand dollars worth of insurance on this building. I can, I can repla, I can put it back for that amount, that's what I wanna do. While he's looking at that, I'm quick, like, gotta thank you, uh, for honoring, from the State Bank Trust, for honoring us with the opportunity to serve you, we consistently strive to earn your continued confidence and goodwill. State Bank Trust, thank you.
And this came in today, because I added it to the policy.
And I guess everybody's seen the new, uh, pumper truck out there. Looks good. All right, if nobody else has got anything else, I need to ask for more, I don't have any other old business that I'm aware of. If nobody's, uh, anybody else has got any other business, I need to ask for a motion to pay the bills.
So, they're taking the Southland Loop in March this fall?
Yes.
Tim made a motion. Keith second, all in favor of paying the bills, Jane? All right, nobody else got anything else, I need to ask for a motion to adjourn.
State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today, we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down-home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole. Because, when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Well, my name's Vince Hughes, I'm the owner and pharmacist at Hackleburg Pharmacy in Hackleburg, Alabama. We're located here on Highway forty-three. Here at Hackleburg Pharmacy, we have state-of-the-art technology to ensure accuracy and efficiency to effectively help us provide you, the patient, with the best pharmacy services available. We carry a variety of products, from a full line of vitamins, to knives and knife sharpeners. We open Monday, three, Friday, eight a.m. until five-thirty. Phone number is two oh five, nine three five, three three nine two. We'd love to be part of your healthcare team.
Hello, everyone, this is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today, and just want to let you know, we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now has a lawn mower. We're gonna have a full line of the steel zero-turn mowers, we have a full line of the steel weed trimmer and chainsaws. Just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint to hardware, anything you need. Come see us, we'll help you if we can, thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Guen and Fayette, we've been serving the people of northwest Alabama for twenty-three some odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store, if you'd let us, and we'd like to thank you for your business this past year, and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year, and for the years to come. Merry Christmas and have a happy new year.
Hello, Lee Hines here, owner-operator of Alexander's Heating and Air Condition.
We've been family-owned and operated since nineteen fifty-four, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and light commercial HVAC systems.
So, as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Guen to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at two oh five, nine two one, six seven, one two.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel... Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties, you don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at B S C C dot E D U to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us, call us at two oh five, four six eight, four six two five.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality service and products with value to meet every family's need. You will find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at nine eighty-one Alabama Highway two fifty-three, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tony Bowen, certified funeral service practitioner, at two oh five, four eight seven, four three two seven.